Well, as long as we're all silent, I will offer the invocation before the meeting starts. So please, if you want to join me, bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet as a community and to discuss important matters. We pray that you will give us patience with each other, that you will give us respect for each other, and that you will guide our words in our speech and in our actions. We pray that the council would be guided by you and that the decisions that are made here tonight will be beneficial to the community and bring glory to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Feel free to resume your talking. We won't bring the meeting to order until seven. Since it's now 7:00 PM, I'll call the meeting to order and ask that you would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shirley, would you take the walk off, please?
Hi, panel. Chad Fuller.
Here.
Mindy Galberty.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mia Harmon.
Now looking for approval of our agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as per.
Second.
We have a motion from Chad seconded by Steve. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now looking for reading and approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the July 20th, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
Could I ask if you guys could speak up? I'm hearing.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
We'll try. Let us know.
Well, I don't. Do you want me to read that again? Do you want me to read that again? It's just approving the minutes from last meeting.
It's fine. Just if you could speak up, just so I could hear.
We have a motion on the table, read by Mike and seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have any pre-approved reports tonight? I don't remember getting contact by anybody for one of those, so I think we'll move on to public comment. And before we kick off public comment, Larry Lambert, councilman, mayor pro tem, and chairman of the ordinance committee is gonna give us a little bit of an outline.
I'll try to speak up so that everybody can hear me. I'd just like to clarify a few points concerning proposed animal ordinance amendment, which I believe is the reason most of you are here this evening. This proposal is part of a broader activity that our ordinance committee has been undertaking for the last couple of years, trying to update and clarify a number of the city's ordinances. The specific ordinance in question is not a new ordinance. It's been in place for a number of years dating back to at the latest zoning ordinance, 2016. And actually, the numbers were on the books prior to that. As were their other efforts. Proposed amendment is intended to clarify and update while keeping the basic content intact. The numbers of pets allowed remains unchanged in our proposed amendment, which is the same number, by the way, that's allowed by the Chiawassee County zoning ordinance at this point in time. So we haven't tried to make any numerical changes to the proposed amendment, but it does have some new wording as it was proposed from the existing ordinance. The attention this proposal has received has led to some misinformation inferences that were never intended by the ordinance committee. We were honestly trying to improve the understanding of the ordinance, not to try to penalize any of the residents or any of the animals within the city. So I just wanted to try to level things up a little bit for everyone here to understand that it's not brand new. It's not something we've targeted just pets. It's a sweeping activity across many ordinances that we've been trying to undertake and bring up to date.
Thank you, Larry. I will just give a brief overview of the Perry City Council meeting guidelines during public comment. And this is on the table at the back too, if you want a copy of it. Public comment will be welcome during the agenda item, which we are coming to right now. Please raise your hand to be invited to the podium and please come to the podium to speak. You will be on camera. We would like to hear your name, but you don't have to give it. We would like to know whether you're a city resident, but you don't have to say. Please limit your time to allow other members of the public to speak. Each person will have five minutes to discuss their topic, and I will be timing that. If more time is needed, you can request being added to the agenda at the next meeting or you can come back up at the end of the meeting when we have public comment again. The council will engage in discussion if it's appropriate, but for time's sake, I think tonight we'll just hear what you folks have to say. Please be respectful. Please provide supporting evidence if you have specific concerns. If you recognize a problem, please suggest a solution. And the mayor will have final authority in the amount of time given to any one topic, although I think we all know we're pretty much here in regard to the pet amendment, proposed ordinance. So we will begin. Who would like to go first? Yes, ma'am, if you would come to the podium and if you would like to give me your name.
Hi, so my name is Megan Beavers. I first want to, so I appreciate Larry setting the tone for it. There is a lot of added language about fostering, which is the part I'm most concerned about with restricting the ability to apply for the permit once a year. The permit is good for the 90 days to foster, and you can only foster up to two cats at that time, which only allows residents within Perry to foster one time a year, up to two cats for those 90 days. That is a change to the ordinance that was not in the previous ordinance. So I'm less concerned with the pet limit and more concerned with the impact that that has to the animal rescue community. Already, we're getting messages in the animal rescue community from citizens in Perry who have found stray animals and are now scared to post them because they're scared of the repercussions of not being able to follow the permit, not being able to do all of that. It makes people less likely to dive into the animal rescue community and to step in when there are strays outside. So that's already happening. And I have a lot of concerns surrounding the ordinance because it does not seem to be written in cooperation with animal rescue experts. Some of the things you are mandating are not in the best interest of the animals they will impact, namely expecting kittens to be separated and adopted out by eight weeks old. That is not recommended by any vet I've ever met in my life. This will cause behavioral problems in kittens because it will cause them to be prematurely weaned from their mom. Some kittens continue nursing well until 12 weeks old. Adopting them out at eight weeks also leaves them very prone to single kitten syndrome, which makes them more aggressive to their owners because they don't have their playmates to play with. And so cutting them off and setting them to be adopted out by eight weeks is not reasonable. They also cannot be spayed and neutered at eight weeks old. And so that then leads to the adoption of unfixed animals, which then causes consequent litters being born in a system that already has too many cats for the number of homes we have available. And then I have concerns surrounding animals only being able to remain in their foster residence for 90 days because it's very counterintuitive to the point of fostering. Fostering, we keep the animal until they are adopted. And so expecting them to stay with us for 90 days and move on to somewhere else is not why most people foster. We want to see it through. Dogs in particular are going to take up to 90 days just to decompress all the way and like show you who their personalities are, which makes them better fit for adoption. I'm really concerned on why you're restricting fostering cats in some areas altogether. That is brand new, not being able to, some districts who are not able to foster at all. I don't know the reasoning behind why that is being proposed. It's very counterintuitive. Cats are notoriously very easy to foster. They're not a nuisance to the neighborhood if they're fostering. Most time, if your neighbors are fostering, you have no idea they're fostering a cat. So I don't see how that's in the best interest of the public. Animal rescue work is very challenging. We have so few resources already, and this ordinance is going to continue to take away resources that we are already begging for. So I would like to understand where the ordinance is coming from, what is trying to be accomplished by preventing fostering and animal rescue in the area? And then I would love a chance to sit down with you guys sometime and try to figure out how we can accomplish what you're trying to accomplish by restricting fostering without it negatively impacting the rescue community.
Would you want to give me your contact information so we can do that?
And then there's just a lot of like sort of whispering going on that what you're trying to address is the community cat population. And I spoke here last, and so did Holly, about that TNR is the only way to do that if you're concerned about stray and feral cats outside. TNR is the only solution for them. Mass euthanasia, mass relocation is cruel in some aspects, but also bottom line, what you're trying to accomplish isn't effective.
And the information that you brought when you gave us the T and R, all those letters, we do have that in the lobby. We give that out to people.
Yeah, so that's really the best thing for animals. It's if you try to mass euthanize or mass relocate, the population of the cats actually grows and becomes significantly less healthy.
I don't think that was ever the intent of anybody.
Okay. So that's really what I had to say, just that I'm available to sit down and try to address the concerns that you're trying to get at with restricting fostering.
Thank you. Who wants to go next? Yes, from the back.
Hi, my name is Crystal Patrick. I am a member of the community. My question is in regards to the part of the ordinance that states that if you own dogs, that you must have a fenced-in area of your yard that is a certain square footage, 20 square feet, I believe is what it said. And my question is, I recently had Spartan fencing out to my house, two fences just half of my backyard, and their fault was $8,000. So with two large dogs, a 20 square of fence is not going to be adequate for them. But in order to fence out my yard to be adequate space for them, it's going to be an outrageous cost. And I think that in this community, in these times where people are having a hard time feeding themselves and using the food bank more often, it seems, and they're still able to feed their pets, asking them to take on a cost of upwards of almost $10,000 to fence in, properly fence in, not cheaply fence in their yards, when in my area over by the White Oak neighborhood, we don't have a problem with dogs running about, running out in the road. Occasionally, we will see a dog, but the owner is on their tail to grab them. And so I think that it's just unreasonable to ask. And I also ask who is going to be enforcing and coming in to check your yard and your property to make sure that you are not in violation of the fence protocol? And that's why I'm coming today to ask.
Those seem to be appropriate questions. I don't think we have the answers for those questions tonight, so we'll take those under consideration as we continue to meet and discuss.
Okay, because I think anybody can put up a fence, but for it to be a suitable fence, that a dog isn't going to jump over, climb over, knock down, or get underneath, it needs to be put up professionally, and those are very expensive.
I think we will be looking for people who would be willing to perhaps serve on a task force concerning this ordinance. Would you be interested in doing that?
Possibly, yes.
Do you want to give me your contact information?
Yeah, sure. Crystal Patrick?
Yeah, all right.
It's a lot of editing.
Yeah.
Who'd like to be next? Short person, there, yes. Are you standing? Go forward.
Actually, I have a friend who his nickname for me is Short Pig, so I take it.
Do you want to give us your name, Short Pig?
My name is Rosa Jones, and I am a property owner here in Perry. And along with Megan, I also have done a lot of fostering and rescue. And I think there may be some misunderstanding too of some of the people here on the council of some of the animal behavior and needs. And I do own a house down here, down the street, and we have actually rescued over 60 cats from that area. And when we first started, there were a number of cats in the evening that came down the sidewalk and wanted to be fed. And over time, we have cut that number down because of all of the animals. And the females, we've had some that they weren't able to be tamed, had them spayed. And at this time, there's only one female in that neighborhood now that has not been spayed. Over time, we've been able to cut that down, and that's our goal. You know, to be humane, it's not just that we're trying to prevent them from being a nuisance to everyone else, but it's the life expectancy of an outdoor animal like that is less than five years because of all of, you know, the different parasites and animals and things that, you know, they're subject to. And so we're trying to rescue them from that. And out of those animals that we have taken from the neighborhood, 38 of them were females that are no longer here having kittens. And that's primarily what we've been doing. We haven't done dogs. But I have, through the Humane Society of Catlaria and with Chiawassee, fostered over 152 cats that have been successfully adopted. You know, and none of their animals are ever put up for adoption without being spayed or neutered.
Rosa, over what period of time was that, just out of curiosity?
In the last five or six years, we've been working at this, you know, to get that population down and to try to make a better life for those animals. You know, and I'm very concerned about, you're saying that you can be ticketed for feeding, you know, an outdoor animal. There are a couple of them that we have had that, you know, just aren't able to be tamed.
I don't know where you read that, but it doesn't say that in our ordinance.
Well, it was in the one that was posted online.
Well, I'm just clarifying what the ordinance says. It doesn't.
That makes me feel better because, you know, there are a couple that we weren't able to tame. They are spayed, or, you know, the female in any way. And we're still trying to provide, you know, food and shelter.
Yeah, and I think we would all agree that that's a very admirable service that you provide.
It costs us thousands of dollars out of our own pocket, you know, to feed an animal and provide them shelter, to make sure that they get better attention if they need it, and to be spayed or neutered. None of those things come cheap. But we've done it voluntarily because of our love of these animals.
Sure. Larry, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I was just going to comment as well that that was one of those, when I commented the misinformation, that is an example of what I was referring to with my first comments. There are a number of, I'll say intentionally incorrect, but errant statements that have been made.
Mindy, did you have something?
I just was wondering if you release all of these kitties into the same neighborhood.
We've only got two that we've had to release, and yes, once they're in that neighborhood, they know where to find food, they know where to find shelter. To take them somewhere else would be really cruel. There is a program through Catlaria Humane Society that they have a barn cat program. So if there are some animals that aren't able to be, you know, tamed enough to be an indoor cat, they will take them. And the people who are in that program have to agree to provide them with food and shelter and any veterinary care, but then they can be turned into an outdoor cat, you know, in that situation. But we've only got two that we've had to actually, you know, have spayed and released. One of them, the hazards of an outdoor animal, was killed by a neighborhood dog after we had her spayed. But the other one is still there, living there, and she's been there now for, I would say, about five years now, healthy. You know, and it still comes for food and shelter, but.
I appreciate you explaining that because I'm imagining all these cats that you mentioned that you've rescued coming back to the same neighborhood.
No, no.
Climbing in their screens.
No, and that's a part of our goal, is to get them, you know, tamed and adopted into a living home. And most of the regulations, if you have had any, you know, working through the Humane Societies, is that they recommend that once you have brought an animal in like a cat, that it remains an indoor animal. Because once they have been treated for all these different parasites and diseases, you know, when they go outside, they can pick up all kinds of intestinal parasites and be subject, I mean, there's coyotes roaming around over here and everything else. And so it's not recommended to, you know, turn them back outside or have them be even an indoor/outdoor animal.
Rosa, I appreciate all the wonderful information you've given me, but we're at six minutes, so I'm going to have to.
I appreciate your time.
And let me just say that I would love to hear your contact information if you're interested in being on the task force that one is formed. I won't make you say it on camera. I wasn't thinking of that, so I'm sorry.
I would be glad to do that.
So you get with me after, or was sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wonder, what's the task force for that you're mentioning?
Well, we haven't actually decided yet. That'll be part of our discussion tonight.
Like we're enforcing zoning? Is that what you're trying to do? Or giving more information about.
I'm not. It would be a task force that would be formed if it's decided by council tonight not to pass this ordinance.
What is the task force? What is that?
Excuse me, I'm talking.
Okay, well, I was just saying something.
I'll get your question in a minute.
What is the task force?
I'm trying to answer that.
Okay, all right, fine.
The council will discuss that tonight. If they decide, if IF, they decide not to pass this amended ordinance the way it was read at its first reading, there would be a task force created to create a better ordinance. So if people are interested in giving of their time to bring information to that, that's who I'd like to hear from. In particular, people who have had experience or are part of a group that does this type of work. That's what it is. Does that answer your question?
Uh, no, it doesn't.
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot more to answer there. I mean, you're literally saying you're going to make a task force. What's that for? You're literally just beating around the bush and saying, oh, we're going to get people that can take care of them and do this. Well, but then you guys are going to stop and say, we can only have so many animals, and we can only do this, and we can only do this. It's gotta be to your, what you want. It's not okay. How is that okay? Answer me that question. How is it made?
I don't think I can answer that question to your satisfaction.
How is it made?
So we're going to move on to the next person who wants to come to the podium. Yes, ma'am.
That's the way it gets worked.
Yes, it does.
Okay, I'm Patience Cole. I'm the director of Happy Feet Pet Rescue, also Perry resident. So many of you probably don't know, I've been operating a pet rescue in your city for a couple of years now. At current time, we have 186 animals in our care, many of which are cats. Not all in the same foster home, of course. We do have a Department of Agriculture certified shelter as well. And we currently have 174 foster homes. Of those 26 of them fall within the city of Perry. I will admit, I have not looked at the zoning map closely enough to know if they fall in the particular impacted zones, but they have a Perry address. That was as close as I could get in the time I had. So I do have a couple of concerns, particularly about the fostering. That's a piece that I feel is too restrictive in this ordinance. Somebody fostering a cat, like somebody mentioned earlier, you probably wouldn't even know that they were doing that. They're not outdoors. Any of our foster homes are required to keep the animal indoors. They're getting up to date on their vaccinations, they're getting spayed and neutered, treated for any parasites. If the person is becoming a public nuisance or allowing the cat outdoors, certainly we would remove that animal from that home. But I also think that's where animal control would be involved as well. That's a big piece of this that I would propose that you guys work more closely with animal control. Rather than passing a blanket policy here, allow animal control to do their job. If someone's being disruptive, that's where they come in. One of the solutions I would propose is change your requirement for the breeding. That's like the one piece I do agree with, no breeding, right? But if someone does foster a pregnant cat or a pregnant dog, change your requirement for the eight weeks to 12 weeks for dogs, 16 weeks for cats. That's more reasonable. And then I did, I did want to ask you, the amendment doesn't actually mention foster dogs. It just says cats right now. Will foster dogs be permitted?
We'll see.
Okay, that's still on the table? So that's another piece I would say, I wouldn't pass this ordinance, obviously, it's not my decision to vote, but I wouldn't pass this ordinance as it's currently written without spelling that out. Are foster dogs allowed, yes or no? And then, I do understand that the pet limit is not new, but it sounds like it's potentially being newly enforced. So I did want to encourage you, if that is something on the table, I would try to work out.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So nothing additional has been enforced that I'm aware of? And I don't think that's the, I'm trying to speak up for you. I don't think that's the intention of anybody here to actually start enforcing something. Especially the number of pets, that's on the books already, that's what the county has. I know I wouldn't vote for something where we're going to go around counting pets.
And that's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah, I don't know what enforcement has happened. I haven't heard of anything changing on that end of things. Do you have any example?
There's been a lot of information on the internet, so we'll leave that at what it is. But in the event that, let's say, you hire a new code enforcement officer that's eager to get out there and start enforcing these ordinances, I would really encourage you to have a plan and roll this out slowly. People can't rehome their pets overnight, rescues are drowning. So if at some point this does become something where you feel like you have a new code enforcement officer, it's going to start being enforced more regularly, come up with a plan, maybe roll it out slowly over the course of a year or two so that people have time to look at moving, to look at safely rehoming their pets and that we don't end up with cats being thrown outside or dogs being, you know, left in crates outside of animal control. Because that happens even at our shelters. And then I think that was my last comment. I would love to be a part of your task force. I live in Perry. I'll just give you our email address because that's safer, it's public. It's happyfeetpetrescue@gmail.com. Yep, you got it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, sir, come right up.
I want some clarification on the current ordinance. You say you're not changing the number of pets allowed.
Right.
And the information I read on the internet said that it's going from four pets per household to two pets. So what is the current limit?
It's four, what's currently on the books right now is if you live in a single-family residential home, it's four pets. If you live in an apartment, and that coding is RT and RM, basically, we're saying, if current ordinance says two pets are allowed, basically, if you live in an apartment.
So that's not changing?
That both are the same.
One of the main things.
Those are the same numbers that are in the current ordinance.
And also with the rescues, all my animals are rescues. I don't participate in the rescue community other than adopting rescues. And I know that when ordinance like this pass, and they may get illegal for people to do the things that they're doing for the animals, it also becomes a burden on the taxpayer because the people aren't allowed to do their charitable deeds anymore. And then people have to come in paid by the city or animal control. And that burden shifts to the taxpayer. And also, you're not staying and neutering the animals. So the ones that don't get captured, relocated, or euthanized, end up multiplying, and you have an unchecked population until animal control can find them, I suppose. So it's, that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come right up.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Potter. I live out on Beardsley Road, south Beardsley. I'm not in town, but this ordinance coming up concerns me. There are already livestock limitations through the county concerning your agricultural. That is already there, so you don't really need to have an ordinance in place for livestock. Plus, the list you have for pets, you have. Plus, the list you have for pets, you have a guinea hen listed as a pet. They are more disruptive than a chicken ever thought of being. And they will not stay home. They won't. Plus, we're already having problems with animals being dropped off. I work on a farm on Britton Road. We've had several strays show up. There has been cases of kittens dropped off out in, on the north part of Beardsley Road, Terrell Road, that way, since all this talk started about this ordinance limiting animals. And they aren't right about the fostering. Because you cannot let a kitten go at six to eight weeks. It's not good for the kitten. They aren't socialized properly with their litter mates, and they can suffer from single kitten syndrome. They start acting out badly. I am just concerned about the animal limit that's proposed, like the two per animal, two per housing unit, whatever. And I was reading a code enforcement is able to come in your house to verify if you have enough room for that animal.
That's not on our books. That's not in our ordinance.
Not in our intent.
Not in our intent at all.
All right. That's good to hear. Because I know a lot of people will be up in arms about that. And Crystal is correct about fencing. Unless you can do it yourself, it is very, very, very expensive. I checked about having some fence around at my place. I was quoted $25,000 for along the front of my property. I can't afford that. I'm gonna do it myself. But there's things that just don't set right with this ordinance. Like I said, the agricultural livestock is already on the books. You don't need to lower it or anything. And there's quite a bit of area that is agricultural right now.
Do you wanna speak to that or let it go?
We'll take it as a comment. Basically, we do have, but the city, there are ordinances that are in place, you're correct, at the county level. The city, in most cases, what we've tried to do, in the case of agriculture, we're trying to make certain that whatever ordinance we have, in many cases, we'll just copy and use their same ordinance as part of our city requirements for an agricultural district. You're right, we do have some agricultural zoning within the city. And my objective, I think, for our committee and for the council would be, unless there's a very good reason, we would try to, at the best we could, make our agricultural zoning requirements be that of the county as well.
Okay. But it, like I said, a lot of animals are already being dropped off.
That's been, that's been the truth forever.
No. Well, this is just, no, Sue.
I lived out on Bruce Road for 23 years.
I know you do. I know where you live.
Where I lived. I used to live in the country. We had animals dropped off all the time. So it's not a new phenomenon. I'm not saying it maybe hasn't increased, if that's what you're saying.
It has increased since this has started.
All right.
And it's a concern. All right?
Thank you. Yep, you.
Hi, my name's Randy Hazel.
Randy.
Hazel.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I live on Bath Road. We just moved here about a year and a half ago. I'll just, right away, I'm, less government is better for most people, it seems, these days. And this seems like, you've said a couple of times that the enforcement's, you know, we don't know how to enforce it, things like that. So my opinion on a lot of that stuff is, if the enforcement's nebulous, why are we putting something like that in play to begin with?
Well, it's already there.
What is already there?
It's already there. The pet ordinance has been on the books.
I know, and it hasn't been, it hasn't been enforced, is what I'm saying. So why do we continue to amend something that isn't enforced?
Well, do you want an answer to that question, or you just wanna?
No, no, sorry, I'll take an answer.
That, if someone had, unfortunately, been attacked by a neighbor's dog or by a dog that was loose, and that person sued the person whose dog it was, and they went to court, the judge would say, "What does your community have in its ordinance concerning controlling a dog?" Nothing? Or is there guidelines that say the dog's to be leashed or fenced or a limit to the number of animals?
Well, they're, they're.
We have to have those guidelines, just like we have to have speed limits on the road. And we have to have those guidelines for purposes other than just telling people what to do. That's not the intention.
Well, I understand that. I'm glad you brought up the speed limits, because those get broken often.
Yeah.
And they're very insignificantly enforced only when somebody's being really outside of the realm of the speed limit. It appears that it gets enforced, somebody gets stopped, somebody gets taken. So that's the enforcement part. I understand the lawsuit part, but there's two parts to that lawsuit. As one is to the people who actually had a dog who attacked it. That's one side of the lawsuit. The other side would be, what does the community say? So the judge's gonna rule on both instances. He may set aside one because of the city ordinances or the town ordinances, but he's still got the personal injury stuff going on.
Sure. Yeah, and I'm just trying to offer an answer to your question.
So it's, as far as enforcement goes, I can understand handling the nuisance instances such as somebody getting attacked versus the general amendment ordinances that we're going with. Regarding this being amending the 2016 ordinance, can it not be voted to eliminate the 2016 ordinance rather than amend it? Because if it's not enforced, or it's enforced very nebulously, can it just not be voted to no longer have that in place?
I certainly think that's something that the council could discuss.
Okay. Couple other comments. Prior to this meeting, the last couple of days when it's coming up, I was informed that somebody close to me has seven cats in their home. I've lived there for a year and a half. I've never known that. So I'm not sure, you know, in this instance, that would be one where somebody who's most likely above the number in that residential area, I've never known, there's never been a nuisance with seven animals in that.
And most likely, there would never be an issue.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but, and that's where I'm going. It's like, I just don't know how that would be enforced. Why, why have a rule if the rule isn't enforced? It just seems like, I don't understand that part.
Well, take that under consideration.
Okay. And then the permit money for the fostering that they've mentioned, to get a permit, where would that money go? And you don't need to answer that now. That's just a question of what that money is used for. I would like to be a task force volunteer, if you have that. Randy Hazel.
Yep. A J Z E L.
A J Z E L, correct. And that's it.
Thank you. Who would like to be next?
Me.
Do you wanna talk from there, or do you wanna come up?
No, you know what? This is gonna be the one that I want to talk. You ready?
All right.
Were you raising your hand?
Yeah.
You go ahead, that's why I raised my hand. I don't do well speaking in public. But this lady, this gentleman.
I'm afraid that we're not gonna all be able to hear ya, so I'm sorry.
I'm gonna try, I'll try.
You can cry, we're okay, I have tissues.
But this lady, that gentleman, had a cat. And gave her to me after they fostered her for six months. They got her shots, all of her, and they spayed and neutered. I couldn't ask for better pet.
Wonderful.
But they do wonderful work, and I'm sure the other people that do it too. But if I had it then for those two, I would annul it. I live in the perfect town, like this, we can only have one cat, one dog, which is fine, I agree, it's a little apartment. My cat hates outside cats. She accepts the inside dogs. She'll play with them and whatever. But there's outside cats that run wild. Nobody knows who they belong to. But she literally attacks me, you know? And I say, "No, I'm the mom, nah, don't get up." But she hates outside cats because nobody's corralling those outside cats because nobody wants to take responsibility. But the people that rescue and take responsibility are great.
Wonderful.
You know, and to limit them, or to limit anybody, is like saying, "Your feelings don't mean anything," you know? So anyhow, but if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't have mine.
Well, I'm glad that you have yours. Thank you very much for your advice.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Lawrence Brown. I go by the name Lawrence normally. My beautiful wife here owns the Sheer Shed in town, which I'm sure a lot of people know about. Some people have a bad perception of our business based on some neighbors in the past. Now, just to clear things up, we did have some issues with the neighbors, and we cleared all those up, on the health department and everything else. And she currently has the number one business in Shaiwasi County for grooming. That being said, I think instead of discussing all the negativity, maybe this task force you're thinking about should be to help all the people that have these pets that can't afford to build fences. I'll give my time to dig holes and put in fence posts. I'm sure a lot of you guys would. So maybe we need to come up with some solutions instead of just beating around the negative part of this. Help people out. We would gladly donate. Last year, we have a huge following of clients, not just in this city, but across other cities. And even last year on Thanksgiving, we had, how many people? Like 20, 30 people chip in, and we ended up sponsoring 10 families, you know, Thanksgiving meals. So all I'm saying is, with our clientele, we definitely would be willing to help in and chip in on some of these foundations, these fostering companies to help get rid of the problem in the right way. So if anybody needs anything, feel free to call the Sheer Shed, and we'd be glad to help with anything. That's all the names say.
Thank you. Yes?
My name is Miranda Wallman. I do not live in the city. I do live in Perry. I actually pulled my daughter from Haslett Schools to send her to Perry because I was so sick of the big-city VS, as I'll put it. But she was lucky enough to be in the FFA her freshman year. By lucky, I mean it's because we, it's all we could get three days before school started and enrolling. So I guess the question that I have is, you know, my understanding is the school just spent a lot of money to build a new barn for the FFA. And now I'm seeing that you guys are putting in proposals for the FFA, and I guess I just don't understand why. It seems like that program is well-run. The students are, from what I understand, I know several of them in the FFA still through my daughter, are very responsible children. Most of them are National Honor students. Most of them take a vast amount of pride in what they do with those animals.
That was part of our ordinance committee's reason for amending this ordinance. Because we didn't have any guidelines for the egg community, and we knew the school was building a new barn and there would be things. So Larry contacted the FFA advisor, met with them. We had FFA students come into our meetings, and they met with Larry individually to give him the information about what they would be doing there. So we have talked with them. We, I say "we," the ordinance committee, and Larry's the chair. They're very much a part of that.
So this was for the students, that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
The committee did collaborate with FFA.
I just wondered why all of a sudden, the FFA is suddenly getting put in the mashup changes. That was just a curious, a personal curiosity with the being students.
As we talked in the committee, as Sue indicated, we just wanted to make certain because of the activity of FFA, the fact that we're building a new barn, part of their facility is within the city, part is inside of Perry Township. So I met with their advisor, as Sue indicated, and tried to talk a little bit about it. Yes, we did add a few bullets, but they're very general in terms of what you would expect the students that are already doing and all of the advisors are already doing there. So we didn't put any numbers on anything, any lengths in time, because once we understood their process, because one of our concerns was, were we going to put something in that would restrict those students from taking one of the animals and keeping them at their home? It was decided that with the new barn, the new facilities, that the activity would be focused there and not at individual homes.
Well, I was just curious, because my daughter used to, we used to joke, she was a chicken tender. So I know how much work they do on Saturday morning up there at the barns. But I want the gentleman over here that, I just wanna fill this in too, that I like his idea of abolishing all of it instead of making amendments. But that's okay, just a personal opinion. So I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hello. So I'm not gonna say a lot, I'm not gonna repeat the same stuff. My name's Zach Beaver. So I'm Megan, who spoke earlier, his husband. But I think, you know, some of the specifics of the fostering and the cat part in particular, you know, you had mentioned at the very beginning of the meeting, maybe before even the recording started, but, you know, the TNR, like the acronym, you know, the letters. So I just wanna speak about that for a minute, because that's something that I think everyone needs a lot of education, including ourselves, about. And so it stands for trap, neuter, return, not rescue necessarily. The goal is always to rescue them if they're able, but it takes time to do that. So that's a minimum of, like they were talking about before. But, you know, eight weeks is no time to train an animal of any age. So you, you know, need more time than that. And the goal is to get them rescued. If they're, you know, tameable, or they're suitable to be around, you know, children and other pets and whatnot. But that's not guaranteed by any means, especially if they live on the countryside. And it sounds like some people here have been caring for the community here in Perry, the animal, the animal community. Because humans fail at some point. It's all of our doing that causes an animal problem, right? These cats are excellent hunters. They'll survive on their own, but we're the ones dumping them, which we've had some more, you know, some talk of dumping cats and whatnot. But the only thing that's scientifically backed to help with this problem is called TNR. And it's something that we volunteer our time, our money, our, you know, we spend our whole, basically our whole day doing this after our working hours. And it's the only thing that actually gets results. So over in Morris, we've already, just within one block, and just a couple of us have already rescued or TNR'd in general 80 cats. 80 cats is, like, I can't even imagine a room full of 80 cats, right? You don't notice them all at once, because they're roaming and whatnot, right? But some of the, so TNR is something to look into, especially with, you know, talk of enforcement. Well, that would, you know, require money. Well, if we're going to talk about money, TNR and education about TNR, that, I know you had, Mayor Hammond had mentioned you have resources that we had get provided at the last meeting here for the public, which is great. But that is really where money is well-spent, not enforcing and policing this. It's educating, and it's using TNR as a tool to help control this population. Because it's, it just, it's out of control. One dumb cat, you know, they reproduce so fast. And then the only other thing was, I had just, I had wanted to, so I would also be, you know, you can contact my wife, but I would like to be part of the task force as well. But just, you know, you had mentioned that Larry Lambert had talked to the FFA, you know, administrators and whatnot. But I think in terms of making the cat policies, the foster policies, I think you really need to talk to them too. Maybe you guys did, and I just wasn't part of it. That's, you know, obviously fine. But, but there are a lot of specifics in there that are incorrect or they're not much, you know, we think would be a good number. So I just wanted to come up and talk about TNR specifically a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna come forward? We do have to move on to the rest of our meeting before we get to this agenda item, so.
I was going to. I'm not gonna beat everything that's, but my name's Alicia Reagan. I live in Perry. I propose that you find low-cost microchip and hold people accountable for dumping their animals. It would bring money into the city, into the program. I spayed and neutered. I've spayed and neutered with the help of Laura Miller, 117 cats out of my own pocket in Shastler and Perry. Now, if we would hold people accountable, then you could go after them when they dump their cats, or dogs, or whatever. But any pet should be a low-cost microchip in form of a license, because you can't really put a tag on a cat and expect it to stay. So if you would do microchips, then you can scan and see who they belong to and who to go after for them.
I agree with you 100%, except for to do that, we have to have an ordinance.
Well, and you're working on it.
And we're working on it.
Right. But you do have dogs that have to have a license, so make it to where every pet, whether it's a snake or rat, has to have a microchip. Whatever you're considering a pet, make it a microchip. Because you're fighting ferrets running loose.
Take that under consideration.
Well, it would bring a ton of money into the city because of these people dumping their animals. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'm just going to repeat and underscore what people have said about not putting a limit on fostering. We had a cat that was a little screwy, not very good. And we knew it wouldn't function well in a shelter and we had to hang on to it for two years. Finally, it got a home, you know. A lot of these cats can do well in a shelter and that's why I don't think putting a limit on fostering is, you know, particularly wise. So many of these cats, the thing that is so moving about the outdoor cats, I would say roughly 70 to 80% of them have had owners, have had a home and have been tossed out. Somebody talked about the kittens just getting tossed out. Before Corners up here, about three years ago, was like a dumping ground. Friend of mine was in a vehicle behind another vehicle and as soon as they crossed over and they were about to go up the hill heading up 52, somebody just tossed a cat right out the window, you know. So I, I guess not putting a limit on this and also not putting a limit on the numbers. As Rosie said, we used to have, at one point, especially in the winter, about three winters ago, I was feeding 11 cats. And by the way, these people who worry about they're going to be, you know, those cats, as soon as they ate, they run for shelter, you know. Well, the population now is down, I only have seven, six or seven now, you know. So, and it's, it's just wonderful to watch some of them thrive and it's wonderful to watch them have their little fights with one another, you know. Not paw action, you know, get away from my food. But I grew up with dogs, never had a cat. Now I have little cats. I wish I could have a dog, but I really should go out. But all of these animals just, they respond so much to attention. I mean, it's just, you know, it's like an orphan, you know, finding, finally finding a parent, you know. So anyway, I'm hoping that what's been said tonight will have an effect on the committee. So thank you.
And I just had a question.
Yeah.
Since there's so much misinformation online about the ordinance, is there a way to clear that up with the whole town on page again in some way or another?
Well, let's see how the rest of this meeting goes. Again, I don't know for sure what's going to happen when we get to the possible adoption of the zoning amendment. If it's adopted, yeah, we'll absolutely make sure people have that. But if it doesn't, and if we form a task force, it'll be an ongoing process, so.
The proposed ordinance is on the website, it's in the website, right?
Yes, so the.
The proposed ordinance is on the website and also on the website is a, the current ordinance that has been, the portions that have been deleted are struck through, so you can still see them. The portions that are proposed new in this amendment are highlighted in red. So that's on perry.my.us, you can see that.
Okay, thank you.
As it stands right now.
And I think they did post that on Facebook too, if you don't have.
Yeah, I kind of, I read some of it, I just didn't have time to go through all of it.
All right. Anyone else? If not, we'll move on in our agenda. Moving then to communications. Shirley, do you have any communications to share?
I have one. Okay, this is a letter from Mindy Galbibi. Dear Hammond and members of Perry City Council, I regret to inform you I must resign from my position on the Perry City Council effective immediately. My appreciation and great respect goes to everyone I have served on council with, as well as our fine city staff. Because of your hard work and dedication, our community is a safe and comfortable place to live. Keep up the good work. Here's Shirley Mindy Galbibi.
We'll, we'll discuss and address that later on in the meeting. We'll now move to mayor and department head reports. I do just have one item I'd like to bring to the public and I'm glad so many of you are here. We need someone to replace a vacancy on the SADA board. Our city clerk, Devin Miller, who passed away last month, was serving on that committee. They meet once a month and that's the Chiawassee Area Transportation Authority. They meet up in Owasso in the evening monthly. And if somebody would be willing to serve on that board and represent the city of Perry, we would greatly appreciate it. Just let me know by email or phone call or tonight if you would. And now I'll turn it over to our department heads. Megan, would you like to go first? This is Megan Galbraith. She's the treasurer of the city of Perry.
Good evening. I just have a couple of quick things for you tonight. Our audit will start August, the week of August 14th and 15th. The letter I'm handing out to council now is just a formal notice from the auditors that they will be conducting the audit coming up in a few weeks. Same audit firm that we've been using. I expect everything to go smoothly. The other update I have is that recently we received a few donations to the city's parks. The first one was a memorial donation from the Stiff family and we installed a park up here at Veterans Memorial. It's near the rock, it's a nice, has a nice plaque on it that names who the donation is in memory of. It's shared on our social media, so I just wanted to give a thank you to the family and allow pass that around as well so council can see it. If you've been in the park recently, you've seen it. If you've been online recently, you've seen it. The second donation we received is from the community district library. They have installed two separate benches, one each at Veterans Memorial Park and Jubilee Park on the other side of the tracks. The benches are solar powered, they are charging stations, and in the coming future, very near future, they will have Wi-Fi. So if you're out and about in the park and your phone is dying, have a seat and charge it back up. That is courtesy of the Penn and Joanne O'Barry Trust donation to the CDL. And I'm sharing here a couple of pictures of those benches too. One up here, I would also add that there's about 10,000 people that follow the Perry's community page and only about 2,500 that follow the city of Perry's Facebook page. So if you want to get information directly from the city itself, I would recommend that you start following the city of Perry. Most things that are posted there are also always on the website.
Did you want to talk about the possibility of a bench in memorial?
Sure. So last meeting, we discussed putting something in honor or memory of Devin at one of our park up here. I would propose that we do something similar to the black bench that was donated recently in memory of the Stiff family. It isn't aligned with the donation memorial program that we established last fall. I like the permanence better of it than maybe a bush that, or a tree that we can't guarantee its lifespan. This, we know, we're looking at a solid 10 years, minimal maintenance, and I just think it's a more concrete way of honoring Devin.
Anybody have any questions about that? Bob's going to present what he's found about the tree. We ask him to look into here shortly, so.
Yeah, so the purpose of that would probably be just under $2,000, including installation of the concrete pad, the bench, and the personalized plan.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. Thank you. Kevin, are you here? I can't see you. There you are. Kevin is our superintendent of Department of Public Works, for those of you who have not met him.
I reported at the last meeting about the issues that we had at the water treatment plant with the broken pipe. The repairs are ongoing, we're going to prices for that stuff. We're bringing something to you soon. I talked with the mayor. We agreed that we should file an insurance claim and see if we can get anywhere with that to help even the cost for those repairs. The lead service line inventory, we've replaced two galvanized water services in the month of July. We fixed one water service that had low flow. We've been plagued with bad weather lately, downed trees all over town, power outages that require DPW attention for hooking the generator up for sewer stations and outages with that, making sure a generator is running and functioning properly. Just so you are aware, we filed a police report for an illegal entry into the DPW facility. Somebody stole copper out of the building. So we are addressing that with the police department. The DPW assisted with the library board benches and the memorial bench at Veterans Memorial Park. We worked with couriers excavating to get the concrete work done and get the benches installed. The CDL asked us to lend a hand in getting that process taken care of, so we happily did so. And we assisted with the fun night at the park and it was a good event. I definitely think we should have it back. A lot of people had a good time, including my kids. So thank you to the Parks Committee for putting that together. It was a good time. And other than that, it's just the usual summer maintenance and businesses here. Do you have any questions for me?
Counsel, do you have any questions for Kevin? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is our police chief, Kyle Box.
Good evening, everyone. Do not have much of a report, but I wanted to let you know that we had another successful national night out last Tuesday. I want to thank Hammond for handling all those hot ups, so it was quite the feat. But we had a okay turnout, but we had a really good community contact and interaction. So it was very worthwhile and I appreciate all the businesses and all the other donations and support that we had that evening. So that's all I have report-wise. Any questions from you folks?
I think we're all set.
All right. Thank you.
I'm going to ask Bob if he will report on what he found out about the tree that we discussed for a memorial.
I just have to, I'm going to butcher the name. It's a, it's a combination tree lilac. It is, I was surprised, I didn't realize it was actually in the lilac family. I just thought someone named it because it looks like that. Syringa reticulata. Tree lilac, Japanese tree lilac, or silk tree. It does have a white flower like a lilac, but it's a tree form. It flowers a little later in the season than your traditional lilac. They grow about 20, 25 feet max with a spread of about 15 feet. They're a nice ornamental tree. They're fairly disease resistant and pest resistant. So they're, for an ornamental tree, they're a nice tree.
And you think it would do well here? Do we have appropriate places?
The zoning here is fine and the sunlight is fine. It'll tolerate some shade, it prefers full sun. So if you want to put a bench, put something like that next to a bench, I think that's could be fine.
Do, counsel, do you have any discussion regarding those thoughts tonight? Or do you want to move on and title that or put it to our next meeting for discussion? It's up to you.
I have no problem making the decision tonight as long as everybody else does.
What would you like to see us do, Chad?
I think the bench, I think the bench and, you know, possibility of the tree, I think the bench would be a great, a great thing to put out for Devin.
A bench and a tree?
I would say both, but if we only decide one, that's fine with me, but I would say the bench would, would be the top on my list.
Steve, what do you think?
Bob, did we, did you get a cost for the tree?
They're about 200 bucks. They're not a real expensive tree, depends on the sun.
Cottage gardens or?
I didn't find one up here yet. I was a busy, busy week. So I didn't find one. I was going to call it Burke and Farms and some other places around here, so, but I haven't had that chance to do it.
I think both. It's really not a great expense.
The price for the tree, I expected it to be higher than that, but.
That's, that's wholesale price now, so.
I understand. I would suggest we do both for the years that Devin gave to this community.
Mindy?
I was just going to say, as much as Devin enjoyed sitting outside on her lunch and her breaks, and I just think of that, she's really important.
Would you be okay with a bench and a tree?
Yep.
Mike?
Yeah, I'm good with both. Agree, yeah, I think we should do both.
Bob, what do you think?
I'm indifferent, but I agree, I think both is a nice touch. Because I can go either way. I like the bats, the bats, but I also like trees.
And I can give you the names and there's sure is that we dealt with a few weeks ago.
Would it, somebody like to make a motion and give it a price limit or how do you want to approach that?
Let me, before you put a price limit, I gotta make sure that you don't.
It's available.
Okay.
Right. And let me research.
Let's do a no action taken on that topic and put it on the agenda for our next meeting and we'll take care of it then when we have all the prices. Megan, if you could make sure we have the prices at that meeting for the bench and the Moving on then to other committee reports. Mike Connell serves on the personnel committee. And we knew with Mindy letting us know that she was needing to resign, she had been the chair of the personnel committee. So at our last personnel committee, I asked Mike if he would be willing to serve as chair. He's agreed to do that. So Mike, would you give us a report on the personnel committee's recommendations regarding their last meeting?
Sure. The personnel committee met at the request of city council to review filling the position of city clerk, which was left vacant by the death of Devin Miller on July 2nd, 2023. The committee reviewed the job description for city clerk and discussed the skillset needed for the job. Deputy Clerk Shirley Smith has been trained in many of the skills needed by Devin as a backup to the clerk for several years. Shirley was appointed to the deputy clerk position by city council in March 2023. She has proven herself capable. Committee will recommend to council that Shirley be appointed to the city clerk position at the salary of $52,500. The committee discussed the need to create a part-time office assistant position, essentially backfilling her old position. This would replace her position, flex time office assistant position. The job description was reviewed and wages discussed. This would be a part-time position. The committee would, will recommend creating this position for 20 to 30 hours per week at $17 an hour. The position should be posted for two weeks and interviews held with the hiring date of September 1st, 2023 to be the goal. Current flex time position is filled by an employee who will be leaving August 25th, 2023. I would also like to state how fortunate the city of Perry is to have Shirley as an employee. To share a little, when Devin was sick and unable to be at the office, Shirley, among others, stepped up in a big way to keep city hall running. She took on more hours and responsibilities to accomplish what needed to be done. She did this while stating she didn't want to raise. This is an excellent example of selfless leadership during a time of need for the city that hasn't gone unnoticed but need to be stated publicly. Known as more deserving of this position, the personnel committee feels honored to make the recommendation to council.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have reports from any other committees? Any other committees? Okay, we'll move on then to our next agenda item, presentation and approval of the bills.
I think that we approve the bills as presented, we all have rights.
Second.
We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on our agenda, under old business, is to discuss emergency services. I don't think we really have any new information regarding that yet, do we, Kyle?
No, to my knowledge.
So I'm going to suggest, in lieu of the time, that we. So I'm gonna suggest, in lieu of the time, that we move this to the next meeting, and no discussion to be held regarding that tonight. Counsel, are you all fine with that? Okay.
Yes.
And under old business, also, we have discussion regarding building the general fund. Again, in lieu of time, I would suggest that we move that to our next meeting as well. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so under new business, I told Mindy we would discuss that later, and here we are at later. We have received a resignation from Mindy Galvaby, who has served the city of Perry tirelessly on so many committees over the years. I think she served on the planning commission for 20 years. She has served as a city council member a couple different times, being elected and appointed and elected. She's served on the Personnel Committee as chairman. She's served on the Technology Committee, so many committees. Mindy, we appreciate all that you've done for the city of Perry. I'm looking for a possible acceptance of Mindy's resignation.
I move that we accept would regret the resignation of council member Mindy Galvaby and extend our appreciation for her service.
Is it possible, counsel, that we can just add that this resignation is effective?
At the end of this meeting, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We have a motion from Larry, seconded by Mike. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We now have possible approval of the sanitary sewer rehab proposal. Kevin, would you like to come and talk to us about why this is back on our agenda?
I've reported on this agenda item before to council, and we saw approval to do some sewer lining. We set aside money to do that a little bit every year. After our previous approval of this agenda item, I sent a really nice email to the company that does the work for us, Liquor Force, and I stated on there our timeframe and when we wanted to have that work completed, and I never received anything back from them. Apparently got lost in the shuffle. So now that we've entered a new budget cycle and our previous approval is no longer valid, I bring this to you again. It's the same proposal as last time, for the same amount of money in the same section to play, to be relined. It's an area that is troublesome, high maintenance and high cost of maintenance for that section. So I'm asking for approval so that we can continue with our lining project and get this section done so we can look towards another section in the future.
I was wondering why the same thing came about.
Yeah, we missed our, we missed our timeline there. These things happen, but it set us back one cycle, but overall, I think that, you know, we'll reach our goals in the end.
Any other questions for Kevin regarding this item?
I move that we accept the proposal front by granted in-liner for an amount not to exceed $35,845 for sanitary sewer rehabilitation and recommend, recommended by DPW Kevin, supervisor by Kevin.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe, based on the recommendation from the Personnel Committee, that I would like to appoint Shirley Smith as the city clerk for the city of Perry, and approve creating the office assistant position as described in Personnel Committee's report. Looking to council for any discussion regarding that, or for a motion.
I move that we approve and accept the following resolution. Resolve that whereas the city of Perry Personnel Committee has recommended to promote Deputy Clerk Shirley Smith to the city clerk position, whereas it is further recommended that the salary for the city clerk position be $52,500, and it is further resolved that whereas based upon the recommendation of the city of Perry Personnel Committee, that the promotion of Shirley Smith also creates the need for a part-time position of part-time office assistant. It's further recommended that the posting of this position will indicate 20 to 30 hours per week at $17 per hour. Further, due to it being part-time, there will be no benefits. Whereas this part-time office assistant position takes the place of the full-time position of receptionist AP clerk previously held by Shirley Smith, and also takes the place of a receptionist temporary flexible part-time position created in March of 2023 and fill May 31st, 2023 to August 25th, 2023. Therefore, the city of Perry does promote Deputy City Clerk Shirley Smith to the position of city clerk at the annual salary of $52,500, and further creates position for posting a part-time office assistant at the rate of $17 per hour, 20 to 30 hours per week, replacing the prior position of receptionist AP clerk and receptionist temporary flexible part-time position created March 2023.
Second.
We have a motion from Steve, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. If you would, raise your right hand and repeat after me. And Megan, if you'd run up here with your camera and take a picture. I had to turn so she can get your picture. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of the state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city clerk.
Of the office of city clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Now that I've been shuffling through my papers, I'm lost for a second. Give me just, give me just a minute. Okay. We are now ready to move on to possible adoption of the zoning amendment 383, section 3.30, animals in residential and agricultural districts. Discussion.
I would say that with, in lieu of the support or non-support of those ordinance, we need table this. And also, I just want to point out one thing, Larry. Yes, Chiawasi has four dogs. If you're not enforcing cats, only dogs. And city has never enforced cats, only dogs. Before I moved here, we called, we don't worry about cats. So that's new. So it's, it may be a nuance, but it is still new.
And that's why it was called an amendment?
Correct, but it's, it's, in my opinion, that's unacceptable. Also, we have an awful lot of people here, most of them were residents, that I wrote down.
Part of them are.
Okay, you want me, really? I just said both.
Nope.
I can tell, I wrote, let me see, I had one, two, three, four, five, six people that were residents out of the eight or nine people who spoke. So most of them were residents.
Okay.
I wasn't incorrect. Goodness.
Can I just add to what you're saying?
Sure.
Counsel and I have received emails, and I would say at least 25 emails from people who probably are not here tonight, maybe some of you are, but expressing the same concerns that those who did come to the podium and expressed tonight. So I think we are of the same mind.
Yeah. I'd like to interject and.
That's fine.
Make a couple of comments.
In my opinion.
And a motion, I understand. After hearing all the comments tonight, comments on social media, articles in the local news which have happened, and the emails that Sue just mentioned, I believe we'd be remiss in our responsibility to the residents of this city of Perry if we move forward on approval of amendment 383 at this time. Therefore, I'm gonna make a motion, and I'll try to, it's in parts. I move to postpone the possible adoption of zoning ordinance amendment 383, section 3.30, animals in residential and agricultural districts for 120 days. Secondly, we would issue a moratorium on enforcement of section 3.30 of the current zoning ordinance as it pertains to dogs and cats for 120 days. The balance of section 3.30 would remain in effect, and commission a six-member cross-discipline task force to objectively research and develop a proposed update to section 3.30 within that 120-day time period that addresses the concerns expressed with our current zoning ordinance 3.30. So we would postpone any action on the amendment. As it had been presented, we'd put a moratorium on enforcement of the current ordinance that's on the books as it regards dogs and cats, keeping the balance of that in place for the next 120 days. And I know there have been a number of volunteers to be on this, serve on the task force. The reason that I'm recommending six would be, my experience has been, you can't have too many people holding the pencil to generate a draft. And so I'd like to keep the number in the neighborhood of six, certainly not hiding anything. Once that group has been identified and gets a chance to begin some work, we'll certainly communicate what that group comes up with, and not trying to hide anything from anyone. It's just, you can't, in my opinion, draft a meaningful document with everybody trying to hold the pencil.
Larry's read a motion. Does anybody want to second that? Steve? Larry has presented a motion. Steve has seconded it. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I'll just interject, for those of you that said you would like to serve on this task force or have an interest there, please make sure I have some way to contact you, email, phone number, whatever. I'll sit right here and write them down. So moving on to finish our agenda, do we have any other business that may come before council at this time? Counsel discussions and observations? Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have?
Share your hand up.
I'm hand raising. Maybe. Okay.
I was just curious if somebody could look at that tree right across the street from my house, and you notice the branches are falling down, the tree is half-dead, it's coming down. The next big windstorm, yeah, it's coming down. And it's over the power lines, it's over the street, the kids ride their bikes over there. They had a big branch come down the other day, there would have been a kid under there.
Where is that tree?
Oh, right in front of the McQueen house, kind of kitty corner between the fire department and the McQueen house.
Okay. Kevin, could you take a look at that tree tomorrow?
Yes, we are aware of a couple of dead trees on McQueen property in the roadway. I contacted a tree service today to address the issue.
Thank you.
I'm having trouble finding a qualified tree service with the proper equipment to come and take a tree like that down due to the sense of nature of the, the power lines and the closeness of the roadway. We're working on it, and it'll be taken care of very soon.
Thank you.
Kevin, I can help with that. I have somebody, I have a friend that I graduated with that owns his own tree company, and he has like cranes, and he has bucket trucks and stuff like that.
Send his information through my email, and I'll give him a call tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Thank you for raising that concern. We do have place now for any other public comment at this time. Anyone else who wants to address council? Counsel, is there any other discussion or observation you'd like to raise at this time? I think we have agenda items identified for our next meeting. I believe now at 8:23, we're adjourned.